People have been asking me, what does EPPAPPA stand for? So, EPPAPPA stands for Asian Historic Islander American Public Affairs. Yeah, so, uh, so what do we do? Well, um, EPPAPPA, we are a five-month history organization, and our aim is to empower young people, as well as the API, young people to run for public office. So, we have programs such as the Intergirl program, and we place that in a given government agency and elected officials' office. And it's, uh, it has been a good program. We've been running for years, and we have some good fruitful, fruitful results. Alright? So, uh, uh, so thank you for coming to our EPPAPPA Delta chapter, which is a brand-new chapter in the Delta. And, um, I am going to, uh, uh, read, uh, read my message to you now, okay? So, National Heritage Area was created in the 1970s by the US Congress. In 2019, the supplemental center of the Delta was designated as the number fifty-five National Heritage Area in the country. And it is also the first destination of its kind in the state of California. So, it's a big deal, you know? We're the first of the state, yes. And we have a hundred members of the National Heritage People's representation here, so we, you will hear from them soon. Alright? So, we emphasize the region's history, agriculture, and recreation of value. Not to mention, one-third of the state's freshwater is flowing right through here. One hundred seventy years ago, the development of the Delta was initiated by the Chinese laborers who built a thousand miles of levee to lay the brown... For some, for some of our most prolific and cultural lands in the country. It has been then followed by Japanese, Filipinos, and Punjabis. A beautiful scar of historic diversity was thus created. EPPAPPA Delta Chapter was recently formed to celebrate this rich heritage. Through his youth program of offering opportunity of civil and leadership engagement, we hope to see this future generation of stakeholders becoming the region's stewards. We would like to thank everyone who attends our inaugural town hall meeting this evening. We would like to thank those elected officials, hosts of experts from the DWR and local community who came here to share their knowledge with us today. To share our knowledge and knowledge on occasions such as this will always bring us a step closer to the betterment of the Delta. So, I just thank you all for being here, and without further ado, I'd like to, uh, introduce our moderator and co-host of the evening, County Supervisor Ted Hughes.
Thank you, Douglas. I hope everybody realizes there's a great spread of food over there, and so if you didn't take advantage of that, uh, please do it at some point tonight so that it doesn't go to waste. And, and I hope you, you were able to, um, appreciate the rich history that Douglas just laid out about the Delta. And it goes across generations, it goes across, uh, global influences, it goes across, um, just about every race, religion, creed, and, uh, people going all the way back to Mewoc and Neesip. And, um, you know, I just want to say that, I was saying to someone earlier tonight, you know, when I was growing up in Elk Grove, we would come down to the Delta, and, uh, you know, my uncles had houseboats at Wimpy's Marina, so Jerry, here's to, here's to your spot. And so, we'd come down there quite a bit, and used to fish on the river, used to go down and, uh, have Chinese food, or go to Aldo Wops and Lotta', um, come down to Tony's if we were feeling like we needed a fancy meal, uh, and then go all the way down and go over to Rio Vista and go to, uh, Fossil Big Horn if we wanted something a little out of the, uh, ordinary. Used to go to the Crowd High Festival back when it was a pretty raucous affair, and, um, you know, it's, uh, and fortunately, when I moved back, uh, I kind of forgot how special the Delta is. And I forgot that it's important to come down here and to take a break from the world and, uh, just soak up this place. And that is one of the things that, uh, you know, as I've come into doing this job, that I really feel most grateful about. And I'll tell you a quick story. Earlier this year, it was probably, uh, February or early March, I had a nine o'clock meeting with the Scheidigers to talk about the Discover the Delta Museum, uh, down there, Highway Twelve, uh, just on Sherman Island, across the river from Rio Vista. And so, as I left Elk Grove, I came through the farmlands, and I'm coming down, and there's still a pretty heavy fog hanging over everything. It's just, it's like the world was just saying, "Wake up a little slower today, take it easy." And so, I drove through the farmland, and then I came across, and as I hit, uh, the river, the sun had come out, and it was glistening off of the water, and the, the fields were just this verdant green, and the birds were flying around, and just big flocks of them moving from here to there, as I'm driving along the river, and I think, "I'm in my office right now. How lucky am I?" And, uh, you know, I, I, I said when I was pursuing this job that the Delta is important, and that I was going to do everything I can to respect where it has come from, to respect all of the, the promise that it still holds, and to respect, uh, the needs that, that certainly, uh, we have, uh, as an area, as well as a state, as well as a humanity. And I'm still trying to do all of that. Um, it's a pretty big task, but you know, there are some real, I think, simple, straightforward governance issues that, um, was top of mind as I sought this job, and has been top of mind as I've started to do this job. Not all of them bearing fruit straight out of the gate, uh, but I think that we have seen a marked improvement in law enforcement presence, which is huge, um, response times that are actually reasonable. Uh, I was just telling someone that unfortunately, we had a cargo in the river on Sunday, and both Walnut Grove Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department were there in less than twenty minutes. Uh, that's pretty huge. Unfortunately, it turned into a recovery and not a rescue, but nonetheless, um, that's a, that's a marked improvement from where things were. Uh, the second thing that I heard very loudly, uh, from, um, folks was, was to have better roads and, and make the roads safer, yes. Can be an applause line. That's tough for me to do because District Five covers six hundred and fifty square miles, and out of all of the money that we allocate for roadway maintenance, because of the formula that the county uses that is a mix of population and lane miles, District Five gets fourteen percent. And so, that means this year, for the entire roadways in all of the district, I'm going to get a little over four million dollars to prioritize on what roadways should be repaved, add a clip of six hundred thousand to a million for every segment that I do. So, as you can imagine, there are way more segments that need work than I can ever come up with the resources. But I'm trying. I've got some good ideas to, uh, to bring some life back down here, um, for some tourist-type engagement and some economic development, that hopefully will start to generate, uh, a little better revenue source to, to maybe spread that around a little bit. And then the third thing, and this is going to be a part of tonight's discussion, but I hope it doesn't devolve into the only discussion that we have, and that is to not let a major state infrastructure project destroy the quality of life that we experience down here. And I say that with full recognition, and this will be a part of the discussion, full recognition that that water, uh, is, uh, belongs to the state of California, and it belongs to all of us. And so, it's not a us versus them issue, it's a how do we all get along and meet all of our needs, uh, in a way that is sustainable for all of us? And how do we do a better job, this is just my own, uh, editorializing right now, how do we do a better job of capturing these high-water events, putting water back into the ground so that we can not rely on surface water all the time? We can shift. When the surface water is here, we'll use that, and we'll put it away into the ground so we can use the groundwater, uh, in the drier years. If we don't start thinking smarter, um, it's going to be, uh, an uphill battle forever. And that's why one of the things that I am most proud about, that I was working on prior to being a supervisor, and am still going to see come to fruition starting next year, and that's the Harvest Water Project, that will be taking the treated effluent, the treated effluent from the sanitation district and running it down through pipelines, um, in order to take some of these large agricultural wells offline. And what that does for in-lu recharge, of bringing the groundwater up, it's absolutely amazing. And in addition to that, going back to one of the other priorities, uh, in order to accomplish that project, they're going to be digging up the roads to put these pipes in, and the county code only required them to repair back the road that they disturbed. And I thought, "That is absolutely insane, that we're going to have this major project come down to the South County, and we're only going to pave back half of the road and leave the other half in the, in the poor condition that it is." And so, I fought for it in the budget, and we were able to put some money in the budget that says, "When we do major utility improvement projects, we will repair the whole road," and that means we don't have to come back for it. Promises made, promises kept, I mean, that's all been said before. I'm working on it. Uh, there's a lot of other big issues, um, homelessness and crime, and, and, and just kind of the general state of, uh, our situation right now, um, that I have been diligent in working on, but our next speaker, I think, really has, um, grabbed the bull by the horse. And it's rare to see someone who is that committed to a cause, and someone who absolutely walks the talk that, uh, he said he was going to do, and I think he is, um, trying to rein in some of the poor decisions that are being made under the dome, and figure out how we at least improve the quality of life for our residents right here in Sacramento County. And so, I am proud to introduce my good friend, Sacramento County District Attorney, Ted Hughes.
So, first of all, it's an honor to be here. I want to thank EPPAPPA Delta Chapter, I want to thank Pat Hughes, Supervisor Pat Hughes, for the invitation for me to be here tonight to speak with you. So, I want to talk first about the Delta. So, I was born in Vietnam, and my family escaped Vietnam on fishing boat. But before we did so, my grandfather on my mother's side was a, a rice farmer, lived on a dirt floor. And if I stayed in Vietnam, I would have probably ended up being a rice farmer myself. And so, when we came to California, and this country took us in, and I grew up in California, we spent many of the summer in the Delta, fishing, enjoying the Delta, and the beautiful jewel and the resources that we have here in the Delta, because this is really at the heart of California. This is the heart and soul of California. This is a place where people that are here for generation upon generation with their family, this is a place where we have immigrants and people coming from so many places coming together to build a better life and a better community. And so, I want to recognize the beauty and the treasure that is here in the Delta. And so, the mandate of the District Attorney is always public safety. Public safety and the fair administration of justice. And so, what does that look like and what does that mean? So, I want to introduce her, I'm going to ask that she stands up. It's Caroline over here. Caroline, please stand up. She is the Community Prosecutor for the EPPAPPA. She is your prosecutor. And so, she's assigned, uh, to the south part of Sacramento County, and with particular focus here in the Delta. She is your prosecutor. If there are issues that you are facing, whether it's vandalism, whether it's theft, whether it's something that's happening at one of the marinas, whether it's an environmental issue, whether it's gangs or unhoused population, she is your prosecutor. And she is doing a great job down here. She lives as part of this community, her office is down in South Sacramento, but she is here for you, and we are here for you. So, what are some of the issues that we're facing? Yes, we're facing the traffic coming from the Bay Area, where they're speeding and they're cutting over and the DUIs. And we will hold individuals who violate traffic laws accountable to make sure that you are safe. What else do we have? Recently, we filed charges in regards to somebody who, uh, had committed credit card theft, and had stolen to the excess of ten thousand dollars worth of gasoline. We filed, Caroline, filed charges, we are prosecuting that person, we have an arrest warrant after them, we will find them and hold them accountable. And so, that's part of what we do. Some of what we also do, for example, is we have, um, people, um, and individuals and companies that will park their boats, or that will dump their boats and dump their sewage material, and that will dump their petroleum and their asbestos and their chemicals into our waterways. And so, one of the biggest projects we have here is that we are actually suing a company that has literally parked dozens of their tugboats, dozens of their tankers in the middle of the Delta, and just left it there as it begins to sink, as it begins to leak chemicals into our waterway. We're also working right now to retrieve essentially, um, a, uh, a boat that is leaking petroleum, and we're working with Congresswoman Doris Matsui, we're working with, um, local Assembly members, with Supervisor Hughes, the Coast Guard to remove this, uh, because it is an environmental hazard and disaster waiting to happen. Um, in addition to all those things as well, we're working on, and you may have seen in the news, that I am really pushing the city of Sacramento in regards to dealing with their homeless and unhoused crisis in a compassionate way, because it's not compassionate to allow people to live and die on the streets, but it's also not compassionate for you, the people that do live in homes, the small businesses. So, if you ever go to Sacramento, you see it day in and day out, on the streets of Sacramento. So, I am really holding their feet to the fire, and I will continue to push and push and make sure that they are accountable to all of us, and that the laws apply to all of us, just not some of us. So, these are some of the public safety issues that we have, but at the end of the day, um, I want to acknowledge that we have a great working relationship with the Sheriff's Department, with Sheriff Jim Cooper, the PA team, um, and I want to recognize Supervisor Pat Hughes, who, day after day, week after week, month after month, continues to represent this community, um, and really speak for this community. And I also want to recognize Douglas and C.C., who, um, really are the heart and soul of EPPAPPA. You know, it's a... I'm working with you, and what they have done and what they represent is community engagement. And I can tell you that I've been to a number of town hall meetings, the fact that you are all here, and the turnout that we have here is amazing, and it's a reflection upon the passion, a reflection upon how you feel about your community and your engagement. And so, we are here to be partners with you every step of the way. And if you ever have any issues, please reach out to me, reach out to our office, we are here to be partners with you. Thank you so much.
Uh, Ron Freitas from, uh, San Maquinhos County, San Maquinhos County District Attorney, was supposed to be here, but I think he had another engagement. But we did have Cooper Condit from Assemblymember Eve Cora's office was here, and, um, Steve Severs from Assemblymember Villa Corvina's office is here somewhere? Maybe was here earlier.
Oh, well, I'm not, I'm not working with him right now, I'm just here.
Okay. Fair enough. So, he's here, but he's not here. Okay. We'll accept you either way.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily.
Okay. And then, uh, we also have the Vice Mayor Vallejo Rosanna Berger Aguirre, and she is one of the state's, so, thank you to her. Yeah, but I think she will represent the Delta, and certainly the gentleman Bill Dodd that holds the seat now is a champion of the Delta, a champion on the, uh, Delta Protection Commission, um, and, and many of the boards that I sit on. So, uh, at this point, I'm going to invite some folks up from State DWR, and they are going to talk about, uh, a lot of the, the risk and the programs and the funding opportunities that happen in this very complex labyrinth of waterways and levees and farming that's right outside of these windows. And so, we have Brian Brock, uh, from the Department of Water Resources, Max Keshuk from the Department of Water Resources, Carrie Buckman from DWR, Graham Bradner from the Delta Conveyance Design and Construction Authority, and Valerie Martens, DCA Communications Manager, some of whom will be speaking, and some of whom will be here for questions, uh, should they arise. Um, and again, this is an opportunity for learning and, and discussion, um, and not necessarily, I don't want things to become too heated and to, um, devolve into, uh, too much of a, a bad situation. So, um, look forward to some good information, and I guess we'll start, is this Brian?
Yes.
Alright, Brian, come on up. Thank you. I, I only have good news tonight, so you don't have to worry. So, the department does a lot of things in the Delta, and I've been spending, I've, my, my career, uh, for the last twenty years has been in the Delta. I've spent a lot of time in the West Delta, Sherman Island, Twitchell Island, which, uh, the state owns a significant proportion of. I've spent a lot of time in McCormick Williamson Tract, uh, which the state owns, Staten Island. I've, I've, I've done, I've done a lot of work on a lot of the islands here. Um, one, a couple of the large programs that we have, uh, in, in my branch is called the Delta Resiliency Branch. Um, we, we fund local agencies, uh, to do work on levees. We fund local agencies to do work for habitat improvement. Um, and a lot of times, those are married together in order to have multi-benefit projects, so a levee project will be married, uh, on the water side or the land side with habitat to support both fisheries, riparian, avian, uh, and, and different, uh, different habitat benefits. So, um, a couple of the large programs that we do, there are seventy-plus local reclamation districts throughout the Delta. We have contracts with every single one of them, every single year, to do maintenance on their levees. This year, it's going to be about thirteen million dollars of, of maintenance that we're going to grant out to the local reclamation districts, and, and the intent is, uh, ounce of prevention is worth a pound, a, a pound of, uh, of cure. And, and that is really true. Since our program has started, um, and really has started to be funded over the last, uh, you know, since two thousand four, two thousand five, there's been one levee failure, Jones Tract. And that was really likely not due to anything that could have been predicted, it was likely due to a beaver, and, and, but, but the state came in, the state, uh, fixed the levee, and the state pumped out the levee. So, uh, this, the Subventions Program, uh, we also have, uh, programs, um, and we have a project solicitation package out right now. Uh, we, we received seventeen applications, hundred and fifty million dollars worth of levee improvement projects. We're only, we only have funding to be able to fund thirty-seven million dollars worth of that, but we're continuously, uh, searching out money to improve the Delta levees out here, both from a maintenance standpoint, as well as a, as, as well as a levee improvement standpoint. That's not all we do. We also have that habitat improvement, uh, element to it as well. Uh, redoing habitats, uh, both on the water side from a levee standpoint, as well as taking some of these islands like McCormick Williamson, or Grizzly Slough, or, you know, pieces of Sherman Island or Twitchell Island that, uh, the department owns, and, and converting that. Those that have gone down, uh, Highway Sixty, uh, one, one sixty, have, uh, seen how subsided, you know, as you go over to the Antioch Bridge. You're at, you know, fifteen feet below sea level there, where, you know, the, the height of the water is, is about five feet above sea level. That's a twenty-foot difference. So, if Sherman Island, if those levees were to break, that would have significant impact on, on a lot of things, on, on people, on infrastructure, on transportation, on, on, on homes, on, you know, uh, water quality, on habitats, everything like that. So, the, the work that we're doing is to ensure that those projects and those, those habitats are restored. But wait, there's more. We, we also have, uh, some significant, uh, studies that we're doing. We partner with other agencies like the Army Corps of Engineers to try to determine the last time they identified what the hundred-year flood is, so that's, um, what the chance, what the elevation is in a certain area, uh, one in a hundred chance. So, you get a big storm coming down, and those, 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 those flows get high, so how high is that flow? That hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-two. Things have changed since nineteen ninety-two. So, we're working with the Army Corps of Engineers to redesign that, which has an impact on how high levees are, um, and, and how much, uh, funding that, that we might be able to get. Things like climate change are going to impact, so we're, we're, we're building projects, we're, we're doing work in order to, uh, make the Delta a more resilient place, uh, to, to, to get to those things. And then, lots of habitat studies. You know, we, we throw some of these habitat projects out there, and we don't know, is this really making a difference? Is it making a difference for Delta smell? Is it making a difference for Swinsonsuck? Is it making a difference for a lot of those endangered species? So, we, we partner with, um, uh, different universities, uh, UC Davis being one of the big ones, uh, to, to try to measure and monitor what we're doing out there, to make sure that it actually has a beneficial impact on, on, on the environment. So, um, that's, that's a lot of what our program does. Love the Delta, it's one of the most important assets the state of California has, it's really provides the lifeblood for, uh, the Delta, and, and, and we need to take care of it, and the Department of Water Resources has a major element of, of doing that, so... Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Max Keshuk, and I'm with the Department of Water Resources, Division of Flood Management. So, we deal with the part when there's too much water in the state, and we help move that water safely out into the ocean so that nobody floods. And our focus primarily is ensuring community preparedness in the Delta. And the way we do that is, we have strategic facilities located throughout the Delta. Uh, there's three in particular. One is in Rio Vista, just down the river, another one is at Twitchell Island, and Stockton Yard, so it's right off of I-5. You can see, if you look to your right, if you're going south, lots of rocks and big metal beams and things like that, at the disposal of the state and for the Delta. Uh, it's here and available if there's a flood pipe that's necessary, or any kind of repair action that needs to be done in an emergency. Uh, we do have, um, so those are materials that are available for the agencies that are, that request them, uh, through the Flood Operations Center. And then, we also have an Emergency Response Plan, which is the Delta Flood Emergency Management Plan. Uh, it provides financial assistance for local, uh, for the locals. There's an Emergency Response Plan in terms of what to do when the water rises, or when you have maybe a boil or leakage, levee leaking, or an actual breach. So, there's different levels of an emergency scale, if you will. And, uh, there's flood fight training available for the locals, for the communities, for the agencies. Uh, we do provide financial assistance via grants to the, uh, either the county, or the city, or the local maintaining agency, anybody that has anything to do with responding to the, uh, high water, the levees, and, and the Delta. Uh, there is flood fight training available, and that's actually available to a community. So, if you have, you know, a group of people that is interested in learning how to flood fight, you can put a group together, call the Flood Operations Center and say, "Hey, we have an interested group in this community, and we'll put you on the calendar and come out and, and provide that training, uh, for the community," so that, um, you wouldn't be the example of how not to stack sandbags in front of your house, because there is a proper way to do it. So, there is training available for that. Uh, and then there's, we have annual preseason meetings for the, uh, for public awareness. It's an effort that we conduct every year, it's coming up right now, there's a few meetings on schedule already, uh, to kind of remind the public about the chance of flooding, the high water that may be here, even though it might seem sunny and dry, there is a chance of flooding every single year, and that's just the effort to kind of remind the folks that, so that you're kind of wildfire preparedness, you make sure there's no shrubs and things like that, well, you make sure there's the drains are clean and no water has a way to get out safely and not flood your house. And finally, we have the Delta Working Group, uh, established, uh, and that's been going on for years. It's a monthly meeting that we participate in, we coordinate with the five Delta counties, uh, and agencies and consultants, uh, that come together once a month, and we discuss... And we discuss concerns, questions, and opportunities, whatever's available for, you know, if there's a grant program coming up or things like that. It's just kind of bring everybody in the room so that we all know each other so that when there is an emergency, you know, we know who to talk to and wide communication are open and it's a smooth, smooth emergency if that ever happens. So without any further ado, if you have any questions, I'll be here till the end and you can ask.
Thank you. I know it seems kind of odd to be talking and thinking about floods when we've been in drought mode for so long, but you know, that was day one in the office for me. There's an atmospheric river that came in on New Year's Eve and over top the Casuas River caused significant property damage, several lives that were lost. And so I've been working diligently since then on a multi-benefit project to provide for flood attenuation and mitigation, as well as groundwater recharge, habitat restoration. And I can say that DWR is absolutely a critical partner, both with the resources and the expertise in order to help make that. And then all of that is important because when you have, you know, 65,000 cubic feet per second coming down the Casuas River with all of the material that it gathers as it comes down, and then all of that hammers into the Delta, that really creates a significant risk pattern for the Delta levees. So I want to go back just a minute and think, as DA Ho did, APAPA Delta Chapter, newly formed, for hosting this and coming up with this idea. And APAPA is the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs. And they are a very influential group that connects the community with their elected representatives. They do a lot of good work and a lot of events and functions that do just that, provide for networking opportunities. And it was founded by Senator Jim Nielsen and Mr. C.C. Yin. And we are fortunate enough to have C.C. Yin with us here tonight. C.C., if you would.
I'm short. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad that Supervisor Pat mentioned about Jim Nielsen. Yes, Jim and a dozen people in Sacramento. Few of them are here, actually. Vicki and a few of them are here, actually, together. Plus that Seminole Valley folks helped us start APAPA 22 years ago in Sacramento. Two years, five years later, there was an effort to save Locke as a historical site from that being sold to the developers because the historical site and also the center of Delta. And now, of course, now we're here talking about saving the Delta, love Delta. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, I'm very proud to be a part of this entire effort that Douglas and his board. Of course, you're bored, Douglas. You have to stand up.
So we are all members.
Do you want us to get all the chair table moved for you? From the red, we have a Jamie O'Tonley. Yeah, yeah. Put it down. And I'm Paul Smith. We're all in Water Grove and we have just committed right in the video. And we might have Mike O'Tonley. We all have happy. Happy heart in the Delta. And I'm Damashan. It's a real pleasure meeting all of you and thanking all for making this event possible. Thank you. One of the people, you know, Dr. very much more than I do. He's the guy who volunteered for almost 20 years everywhere we went around the country since 22 years ago. Florida, Texas, Washington DC, New York, everywhere. He always just showed up. I said, what you doing here? So anyway, 22 years in the national organization, 58 chapters. You're the number 58? Douglas, 57?
58.
And I lost time. When I went to school, I almost flunked on the math and the chemistry. But I was very good in building structures, bridges, rolling the top of waterways. That was the part I was good. But then, but anyway, we're talking about here at the Delta. And let's see, oh yeah, those coming far away from Sacramento, from Sonoma County too. APAPA people can stand up too, please. Will stop. Yeah. Yeah. I'm David. The chairperson for the Water Grove job, yes. Well, again, APAPA is much American story, you know. Delta same way. No, when we tried to learn a lot about Delta 25 years ago or 20 years ago, we learned Delta was actually built by people from Europe, first of the farmers, you know, from Ireland or those former countries, you know, in Europe. And then after that, African people come here, helped out in the farms. Then the Asians, you know. Now everybody, you can see people sitting here, this is called American, this is called American, you guys. We're Americans. The Asians coming later part to America, as you know, the rural workers from building the Delta. They're good in building them. That's why today I was talking to Supervisor Pat that we have this flood problem before because Delta holds the water in flooding wintertime and you give waters, the whole water this summer and cover the entire California, not for agriculture, but for all the population cities as well. That's where it's so powerful. That's why we, you know, Nielsen, everybody else, they are in the central valley to export our best agriculture in the world, the most powerful and the best one. So anyway, I grew up, I grew up as a farm boy, just like this, but much less flat land or hills, valleys. I was, my family, my grandpa had small land, but it's in the hills. Did never see a flat land. I drove all the way here, you know, from Vacaville, flat, beautiful land. That's why 20, most 25 years now, I come this year, 33 years ago from Berya. And I built, oh yeah, next time I'll open McDonald's food here for you. It's a few miles up from here. I built a McDonald's 20 some, two, three years ago. You know, my daughter still lives there, you know. Yeah, but anyway, this is called American story. Now, APAPA is founded, like Pat mentioned about, it's just like following the immigrant before us, nothing more than that. Nothing. Their dear way how to build America today. We thank them for giving this opportunity and support to new immigrants like us, to come here, to build our lives and also build a better America for us, for everybody else. One is a question APAPA asked, you know, is as Asian Americans actively engaged, support, be a big part of own the community and be a big part of the taking responsibility and every level of public service. Supervisors, layers, everybody else to contribute, to give back, like the immigrants before us. We ask them not to complain about anything, think about what the good things happen to us after they made all sacrifices. The Air Force, no, the levees, those people looking at, the lives, you know, the police people, they give their lives, you know, for what? For us, we benefit. So it's a time for us to give back, to thank America. That's what APAPA is about. But to thank them, we ask them to pay the price, to share the responsibilities, not just take advantage of what they've given to us. That's why last year, November, the governor, lieutenant governor, all the people that, yeah, Jim Nielsen too, come to my ranch. My family decided to give our newly built 18,000 square feet a haul. Really big, 18,000 square feet to California, to the people of California, including your county, as a gift from APAPA program, part of our, from our family, as a part of APAPA group program, for as Asian cultural centers to show the history and contribution as Asian Americans, just like Irish, you know, German, France, or Italy, same way, to provide contribution. And encourage people continue to do that. We still continue to do this part of our ranch too. Once we can have a financial balance, because we talked to county, state, they don't want to take properties with selective financial responsibilities. So we have to make sure that happens. But anyway, my time's up. I just want to thank you all coming here. Again, APAPA needs your help, which is although we say API Americans, but it's American. So our belief is that America first, Asian first, everybody first. Nobody left behind. Thank you.
So he alluded to it a little bit, but C.C. may have grown up a farm boy around agriculture, but he's most famous for being a part of agriculture that had to do with pickles, lettuce, onions on a sesame seed bun. One of the most successful McDonald's franchisers in our region. And I think it's worth saying that, you know, he founded APAPA 22 years ago, right here in the Sacramento region that's now a nationwide organization. And you know, I think it's fitting for that, what he was just saying, because the Delta and the Asian communities are very synonymous with the Japanese and the Chinese and now the Vietnamese and Southeast Asians. And I was talking with Michael one day at a chamber event and he started up Asian Brothers Brewing Company and he said, one of the things that attracts him to the Delta is the fact that it reminds him of the Delta in his home country. And so I think that's just a wonderful synergy that, you know, as we evolve and change, so much really hearkens back to what pulls us to the special place. So now I am going to call out some folks who will provide more information on all things Delta. And if I call your name and you don't wish to come up and speak, that's fine, just wave us off. Nobody's going to be angry about getting home sooner. So first up, Mr. Andrew with the Delta Conservancy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mark Supervisor Hume, and thank you APAPA for the opportunity to be here with me tonight. A little tall, so we'll adjust this a little bit. So as you all know, there's several state agencies that work in the Delta and we're clearly one of them. We are a state conservancy and what that typically means is that we serve the community within our geography and we are to be a state partner in bringing public resources to priorities within those communities. So our geography is the legal Delta and the Sissons Marsh. And you see that sort of that expectation of partnership with the community in the makeup of our board. We have an independent board, even though we are a state agency. Supervisor Hume is a relatively new board member, just this year. But we also have the other four counties represented on our board, as well as the Secretary for Resources, Department of Finance, Senate Assembly Appointees, and two governors appointees. So collectively, we bring proposals to the board, we evaluate the proposals, we fund projects and then manage the grants moving forward from that. We really focus on two major areas, and it's ecosystem restoration, trying to restore ecological function in the Delta, and also economic development. So I'm going to talk a little bit about each of the programs and the types of projects that we're funding. Let's start with economic development. This is a relatively new program for us. I should say that we were created as part of the Delta Reform Act in 2009, so we've been around for about 13 years now. Just within the last seven years, we've gotten some money for the economic development component of our mission. And with that, we have funded a number of really interesting and fun projects, from park improvements, park development, historic preservation. We funded three visitor centers now in the Delta, the 1883 Schoolhouse up in Clarksburg, that restoration that you may have seen happening, the Discover the Delta Foundation Visitor Center that will be at the corner of Highway 12 and Highway 16. And then also the Pacific Flyaway Center that is the walk-in, the wetland that's right there on 680 on the west side of the Sissons Marsh. Also doing trail networks. So it's a way that we're trying to bring resources to the community to improve the overall economic condition of the Delta. And how we do that is with public funding. And so anytime you can advocate for more funding for the Delta Conservancy, feel free to do that, please. We also fund ecosystem restoration projects. In our time, we've funded about 30 different projects out on the landscape. We like to say that those are all locally supported projects. We ensure that our applicants are working with the communities that are in and around those projects and making sure that those projects fit well on the landscape and also restore some ecological function into the system. So that way we feel like it's a nice synergy, working with the community to restore ecological function, but also make sure that it works with the communities. We've talked a little bit about drought tonight. After the third year of intense drought, the Department of Water Resources provided us with some funding to run a drought response program. And that program granted funding out tonight, individual farmers in the Delta, to try to incentivize their shifting to crops that use less water and/or even following their land where they could and then being compensated for doing that. And that allowed more water to stay in the waterways in the Delta for better ecological conditions and hopefully a little reduced salinity. Program is a, it's a really significant program. I think we recognized that we probably didn't save quite as much water as we had hoped because of just the configuration of the Delta and the way the water moves through the Delta. But we learned a lot and helped a lot of farmers. It was a great experience. We also worked quite a bit on subsidence issues. So I think most of you all know that there's a great big hole in the middle of the Delta, about 150,000 acres. It's all agriculture and as we continue to grow crops on those highly organic soils that continue to subside. And so we've been for many years looking at ways to incentivize farmers to simply put water back on that landscape that stops the oxidation, stops the carbon emissions, and tries to engage the carbon market for any lost agricultural revenue. But also we're really trying to incentivize the cultivation of rice in the Delta because similarly stops subsidence, but it's actually a little bit more lucrative crop than a lot of it as well in that deeply subsided area in the Delta. So we're hopeful that this, through this program, we're looking at ways to make the islands more sustainable long-term, both economically and in terms of flooding and subsidence. Our board just approved a $20 billion grant to convert all of Web Tract, about a 5,000-acre island, to 3,500 acres of managed wetland and 1,500 acres of rice cultivation as a way to really demonstrate how we can take these islands, manage them in a way that there's economically viable, keep agriculture involved, but start to actually restore those elevations and reduce the head pressure on the levees and keep them more resilient into the future. That's a project that I've been working on for about 15 years and we're really quite proud of what we've achieved there. So all total, in our history, we've brought about $130 million to the Delta for locally supported projects across all of those programs. I will say that we are about to the end of our funding sources, so there's a lot of discussion about bonds right now. And we're hopeful that the bond, if it passes next year, would actually bring another infusion of funding for us to continue this work with the Delta community.
One last thing I'd like to mention, we actually got $6 million in this year's budget for wildfire prevention, which is, you know, typically across the state is looking at how do we manage our forests better to reduce fire effects. But we don't have forests in the Delta. So we're trying to right now sort out how we can run a solicitation that can benefit the Delta around fire prevention. So we've been reaching out to the fire districts, fire chiefs, as well as other community members just to get better information. What are the priorities? Where are the highest risks in the Delta? And how might we put that money on the landscape to most effectively reduce those risks? So you'll be seeing more about that. We intend, expect to open a solicitation probably in early 2024, and that might be available. Lastly, I just want to say that I think it's already been mentioned here tonight, but Delta Week is coming up, September 24th through the 30th. Senator Dodd, an ex officio member on our board, actually established Delta Week, so look for that.
We intend, expect to open a solicitation probably in early 2024. That might be available. Lastly, I just want to say that I think it's already been mentioned here tonight, but Delta Week is coming up. September 24th through the 30th. Senator Dodd, an ex officio member on our board, actually established Delta Week. So look for that. We are hosting a Delta waterway cleanup on Saturday, the 23rd. Just right before the beginning of Delta Week, there'll be two sites. One on Brandon Island and one on Sherman Island. If you have any interest in coming out and helping to clean up the Delta and keep it a beautiful place, please go onto our website and you can register there and learn more about it. And I think that's all I have to cover. So thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Okay, so next up, since we just heard about the Delta Conservancy, I'm going to call on a person that that was the place where we had our last Delta Conservancy meeting. If you go down to the very end of District 5 at the tip of Sherman Island, go up over the Antinac Bridge, take a left, you're going to end up at the Big Break Visitor Center. So Wyatt Moore, you would come up and, you know, say a couple of words about the Big Break and who you are and what you do. Why people should come down and check you out.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here. My name is Wyatt Moore. I'm the Supervising Naturalist at Big Break Visitor Center at the Delta. And so Big Break is part of East Bay Regional Park District. We're a local district, park district that spans Contra Costa and Alameda County. So we have seven or three parks between those two counties. We directly serve the 3 million residents of Contra Costa and Alameda County. But on any given year, we'll serve around 27 to 30 million people. Within that district, there's about 125,000 acres of land, 1,300 miles of trails, 55 miles of shoreline, 225 family campsites, two golf courses, a frisbee golf course as well, and tons of other opportunities. And the whole reason that we exist is to protect and conserve and preserve the natural and cultural resources of East Bay. And then my job at the Visitor Center is to connect people to those resources. So bring the people in, sharing with them the rich natural, cultural, ecological history of the Delta, of East Bay, and where I'm at, really, it's all about water and the Delta. So we are about a 1,648 acre park. We're called kind of the hidden gem of the district. So we like to say that Big Break isn't necessarily well-known, but it's well-loved. When you arrive there, it is beautiful, right? You see the grasses, you see the trees, you hear the birds. On any given day, you can walk around and you might see beavers, otters, muskrats, mink, coyotes, raccoons, just a swath of wildlife out there. And we are right on the water. So two-thirds of our park is actually submerged. Used to be an old asparagus farm that flooded in 1928. There was a big break of the levee. And it caused this amazing, amazing habitat to form. We're right in between an old foundry and a community. And we like to talk about the resiliency of nature. And I like to connect that to the resiliency of the Delta, right? There's been so much change within the Delta. There's going to continue to be change in the Delta. And no area has really been untouched by humans at this point. However, just like we see in the park and just like we see in the Delta, nature is incredibly resilient. Nature finds a way. In these places where humans are butting right against nature, are butting right against humans, are butting right against nature, somehow it finds a way to survive. You find wildlife, you find diversity, you find healthy ecosystems. And so I really like to think of the Delta and Big Break as this wonderful meeting space for people. So kind of just like how the rivers come down and all meet and converge together, that's what the Delta does, right? It brings people together, it brings us all together in this room, people from all different backgrounds, different needs, different wants, different ideas. Yet we're all still here, listening to each other, sharing, and just being together. So it's a beautiful thing. So I really want to thank Douglas for inviting me to this. Really, really appreciate it. And thank you all for giving me a little bit of time to talk. You are welcome to come to Big Break at any time. Love to have you there. We can walk around, look at plants, look at animals, smell things, taste things. Whatever you want to do, it's super fun. And yeah, thanks for having me and hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
All right. So now let's hear from another project that was funded in part from the Delta Conservancy. Michael Campbell will come up and talk a little bit about the Clarksburg Schoolhouse Restoration Project.
Thank you very much. Earlier this week, the Delta Protection Commission published an article in Courier about segregation in the Delta. And it was focused on the 1883 Schoolhouse in Clarksburg. And while schools throughout the Delta were segregated, at one time, the Clarksburg School was not. And this, I think the most iconic photograph that we've found about that school, grammar school, was all the children that were sitting on the steps for a class, for a school photograph, and the diversity, the ethnic diversity of those children. And we've been at, our foundation's been restoring that schoolhouse, moving and restoring it for eight years. And we've made great progress. Campbell talked about their sponsorship, both in helping us purchase the land that we moved the schoolhouse to and in restoring the schoolhouse. And it's taken much more than our community to do that, to accomplish that. And at first, we were just focused on, we're going to restore the schoolhouse. That's a great thing to do for our community. And then we started to think, well, what else are we going to do? And now we're looking at what are the priority stories to tell about Clarksburg and about what has gone on in Clarksburg and in that schoolhouse, in that schoolhouse, told the stories in the schoolhouse. And it will be a welcome center, Delta Welcome Center, as part of the grant from Delta Conservancy. One of the, the important stories is the Japanese community in Clarksburg. And before World War II, there were over 100 Japanese families in the Clarksburg region, which probably was 10% or more of the population. Japanese started arriving in about 1880. And like any other nationality, the Portuguese before them, for example, Lisbon Island or Lisbon District in Clarksburg. They write home and say, "We found a good deal. Come on over." Before World War II, the Japanese established a cultural and language school outside of Clarksburg. And this is a photograph, I know you can't see it, I'm going to leave it up here, because it's, along with the school kids on the steps of the school, this is probably the most iconic photograph that we've found. And there must be 150 Japanese citizens, adults, Boy Scouts, kids, families in this photograph. And it's in front of the Language and Culture School the Japanese community built. After the attack on Pearl Harbor and the internment, so we had 100 families that were in Clarksburg region one day and two weeks later, they're all gone. About 25 of those families came back. And 10 of those families are still represented in the community today. And I think about saving the Delta, this is one of the things that we're going to be able to do is save the legacy of these families, save the history of these families. As I say, Camp, our community couldn't do it by ourselves. Campbell, thank you very much. Pat's helping us in reaching out to the original citizens of the Clarksburg region, which were the Mewok Indians that were there 3,000 years ago. To tell that story, that's also an important story to tell. So it's, we're a small part of the Delta, but I think that the opportunity that we have to tell a story in the Delta is very important. Thank you.
So I personally, I'm just enjoying hearing this rich tapestry of what this Delta is and what the history of it is and how resilient this place has been through the years. And so now let's talk about honoring that, that history and that tapestry a little bit. Blake Roberts, are you here to talk about the?
Yes, to talk about the National Heritage Area. So this is very interesting. So my name is Blake Roberts. I am a program manager for the Delta Protection Commission. And I think many of you are probably familiar with the commission, but just to let you know, we've been around since 1982. We are locally, even though we are a state agency, we're really locally led. Supervisor Hume is on our board, our commission. In addition, we have four other county supervisors. We have recommendation district representatives. We have city, city representatives, as well as state agencies as well, and the two ex officio members from the legislature. Really, our work encompasses a lot of things. But really, our major focus is on agriculture, culture, recreation. Those are the things that we really focus on a lot, in addition, economic development. I'm also the program manager for the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta National Heritage Area. We are the first national heritage area in California, the only one in California. And this is, this is something we're really proud of. I know the district attorney, Ho, mentioned, used the word "the heart of California", and the Delta really is the heart of California. And that's really what we want to do when we tell the story, is how much it means to California and how much it means to the nation as a whole. So if you're not familiar with national heritage areas, there are 62 across the country. And one of the things I will say about it is that it is remarkably popular bipartisan program. In fact, recently, we had legislation that went through Congress. And one of the things that we were required to have is unanimous consent in the U.S. Senate. That means that not a single senator could object to it. And not a single one did. That tells you how popular national heritage areas are around the country. So what is a national heritage area? We're within the National Park Service, but we are much different than a national park. We're really about partnerships. We have a little bit of funding from the federal government. We have a little bit of technical assistance from the National Park Service. But really, we're locally led. And we are focused on partnerships with groups throughout the community. We serve as an umbrella for all the great projects that you've been hearing about so far. Big Break, 1883 Clarksburg Schoolhouse, these are projects that, I mean, these are the places that we really want to celebrate. And so what we were designated in 2019, right now, our major work is on preparing our management plan. And so that management plan really determines what we're going to be doing over the next 10 or 15 years. And we've been really lucky to have a great group of people who have been working with us. I'm probably going to forget a few people, but at least in the audience tonight, on our National Heritage Area Advisory Committee, we have Mike Campbell, we have Dan Whaley, Paulette Henham, Douglas Shaw, Jean Yoko Toby, Mike Moran. Probably forgetting somebody, all right? And I know that Campbell Ingram has been serving as an ex officio member as well. This is a group that we really want to have that represents the community because this is a community-led organization. So what does national heritage area do? It's really up to us in terms of what we want to do. Some work on trails, some work on recreation projects, some on interpretation, which was really telling the stories, those stories that I know that Wyatt and Mike were referring to. We have overarching stories that tell how special the Delta is to the country as a whole. And we really want to celebrate that through all the places that you see. The national heritage area goes all the way from Vallejo to West Sacramento, down to Stockton, over to Martinez. It's a very large area, and there's a lot of great stories to be told. And I can't wait to tell all these stories. In addition to that, we work on economic development through heritage tourism. We also restore buildings and restore landscapes, at least to sort of represent what the Delta is, what the Delta has been, and what the Delta is going to be in the future. So I'm really excited for the work that we're going to be doing. We're just starting on those projects that are going to be going forward. There's a number of things, but one of the things I will mention is that I think really our coming out party is going to be in the next few years when we get ready for America 250. So if you don't remember, maybe some of you remember the bicentennial, but in 1776, that was bicentennial. Now we're reaching the 250th anniversary of the United States. The stories that we have to tell as a country are immense. And so what we're hoping to do is to really integrate Delta into the great stories of America. And so we're hoping to get all of your assistance with that. So please, I encourage you to be involved. Please talk to me if you want to be more involved. We're really looking for everybody. But we can't do everything. And so that's the reason why, like I said, we are a partnership network, and we thrive on partnerships. So we're looking for all the groups that are out there doing amazing things. We want to work with you. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
You know, I mentioned being reconnected to the Delta and taking on this job and also as I was pursuing the job. You know, I got out to the Crowd Ed Festival when I was younger, and I got to the Crowd Ed Festival this year. I'm going to recognize Councilmember David Kent, who's here in the audience from Heilton. Pamela Gugelhahn, the mayor of Heilton, in the back there. Thank you, Pamela. And I love coming down to the Pear Fair and spending time there. But I have to say, and not that you can pick a favorite child, but one of my favorite things to do is to come down to the town of Locke when they're having a celebration and see the Chinese dancers in the streets and the lanterns hung across the road. And just, it takes me back to a different time and a different era. It just kind of feeds my soul a little bit. And so Stuart Walt Hall, would you like to come up and say a few words about the Locke Foundation?
It's kind of a tough act to follow. I wasn't really quite sure what was going to be going on today. It's very informative. I hope a lot of you folks get an opportunity to say what's on your minds today, too. But since I have a minute or so, I'd like to just say a bit about Locke. I'm sure most of you know about it. But I'm not sure how many of you are aware of the Locke Foundation. The Locke Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to educate the public about the history and the culture of Locke and the surrounding communities. There's been mention about historic landmarks. I don't know if you all know, there's about 20,000 of them in the United States. I'm sorry, that's historic places. Historic landmarks are much more rare. There's about 2,100 in the United States. And there's 170 national historic landmarks in California. Hearst Castle, Golden Gate Bridge, et cetera. And Locke is one of them. In fact, Locke is the largest, most complete example of a rural agricultural Chinese-American community in the United States. It's absolutely unique. And I know for the past hundred years, it's been a little kind of ghetto-fied down there. People come and go. It's been falling apart. Locke Foundation's mission is to not only spread the word about the compelling immigrant experience that created that town, but to also help save that town physically. There's been a lot of different organizations come up here and talk. Great for our Delta. Locke Foundation has had, not had the privilege of getting the benefits from any of them. Hopefully, we will in the future. Hopefully, we will in the future. We rely totally on donations and events and whatnot. If you come to Locke, especially on the weekends, make sure you go into our Boarding House Museum. The Foundation also puts out a newsletter and all the normal things that a 501(c)(3) does. And in the 20 years of its existence, we've grown into a very viable and influential organization. And bear in mind, I'm coming from a town, I live in Locke, of 70 people. We hope the other heritage communities up and down the Sacramento River have an opportunity, and this means people, this means the farmers and the families who've been here for generations, to be able to organize, to celebrate their communities and their families and the generations, the stories that created their communities. Thank you, Douglas Shaw, for getting this organized, especially Supervisor Hume for running a good show here. And thank you for letting me share a moment with you all. I hope you hear from me.
So obviously, with the rich history comes, you know, a checkered past. And Locke certainly is an example of that story. Wyatt came into being, how it has morphed through the years, and one of the things is that there's the Past Residents and Descendants Association from Locke. And so I would like to invite Corliss Lee to talk a little bit about that, some of the rich history of the people that lived there. Looks like we're going to have Carol Lee instead.
Well, this is good. Oh, yes, this is the one. Hi, I'm actually Carol Lee. Corliss Lee is in the back, and she's opting for me. So I am part of the Locke Prior Residents, Descendants, and Ascendants Association. We are a new association, also a 501(c)(3). And we, if you're talking about the checkered past and all that kind of stuff, I guess I would say that we are trying to represent those prior residents, descendants, and ascendants that may have been forgotten. And one of the things we're doing as far as a project, more recently, in collaboration with the Locke Foundation Oral History Project, of which I wear another hat, we are going to be doing a documentary, a short documentary on women. And so it's called Voices: Chinese Women of the Delta. And I would say that it's a topic worth delving into, and I hope that we can bring it to light because of the things that the Chinese are. Women tend to be sort of a forgotten group, maybe discriminated against in three ways by our own within. It's all about the boy, that firstborn or anyborn son. It is also that we were part of that discriminated outside of our culture, and just as women in general. So we have a fundraiser luncheon that's going to be held on November 5th, I believe that's a Sunday, in Sacramento. So there is a poster in the back, and I hope that all of you might donate or come. So thank you very much, and thank you.
This evening should qualify for continuing education credits or something. Fantastic. I have three names left, and I don't know that any of you have been approached about speaking or would like to speak. So Anna, would you like to speak about the Delta Protection Advisory Committee?
Sure. My name is Anna Swenson. I've been in the Delta about 10 years. I actually was part of the inaugural class of the Delta Leadership Program, which is one of the most important ways that individuals in the Delta can get educated and have experiences and see different parts of the Delta. It actually was the fundamental reason why today I work in water and all things water. My license plate is Water Girl, because I am groundwater, surface water, and recycled water. It was a really good launching point for me to be able to understand the wicked problems of the Delta, the communities in the Delta, and how I could potentially be helpful, or at least be an advocate for the folks in the Delta. So throughout the years, I've really stayed in touch with the Delta Protection Commission. They're a very important group of representatives that I feel actually represent the people of the Delta and the issues that directly affect the communities. And these communities are very important, they're very unique, and they're very fragile, and they need to be protected. So more recently, I was brought onto the Delta Protection Advisory Committee. It's an advisory committee that was created by the Delta Protection Act in 2010, and so this year, I was nominated and elected as chair of the Delta Protection Advisory Committee. So what our body does, it's 15 people with about four to six ex-officiado members, and we meet every other month. So we alternate every month with the Delta Protection Commission. The following month, the DPAK has a meeting. We report out to the Delta Protection Commission. We study and look at different aspects of issues, including traffic, including waterways, projects that are coming up, anything that is associated with the Delta, we attempt to talk about it. And then if there is something that we feel we could possibly advise the commission on, or if the commission asks us to advise them on a certain issue, we'll do some research and try to really bring back thoughtful, collected, and collaborative, you know, position that tries to represent the entire Delta. So the great part of the Delta Protection Advisory Committee is that it is a wide range of folks that are actually on the committee, everything from, I represent the general public, there's agriculture, there's business, but there's also state agencies that are on the advisory committee. So it's a very robust, rounded group of people. Sometimes we don't always agree, but the best part about it is that there's always conversations, and we're always able to come together, because the love of the Delta is usually the center of all of our conversations. So I'd like to thank Pat Hume for his constant support of the Delta and his constant support of DPAK, and this has been a really eye-opening, wonderful evening, so I'm really glad I'm here. Thank you for having me.
And then Dan Whaley, Delta Legacy Commission. Dan, did you want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, I could.
All right? Sure.
I'm Dan Whaley. I'm from Southern Island. We have the Delta Legacy Communities that represent the Delta, and we're fighting this tunnel issue. And so I'm just going to give you a little five-minute update on the tunnel fight. It was kind of interesting to hear, at least DWR didn't send somebody to try and spin it, but unfortunately, DWR has a $3 billion budget, and they can only give the RVs $13 million to help them maintain the levees. It's not very accurate. Anyway, the good news is, with the help of Pat and the Five County Coalition, they actually brought some Metropolitan Water District people, board members, as well as the new executive director, up to the Delta. They went to the Willam Ballroom and had lunch. They took them on a tour. A lot of them were unaware of the beauty of the Delta and the fact that they could have alternatives. We have a Delta conveyance system. It's called the River, and they need to maintain these levees, and then they can have the water once it gets down to where they need it. Now, the other thing that I never knew, there's 37 water districts in the LA Metropolitan Water District Group. Metropolitan Water District doesn't really do anything but manage the water for these other water districts. They've embarked upon a lot of recycling, reuse projects, and a lot of the smaller water districts are actually becoming water-independent. And they don't want to bite off this 30, 50, 80 billion-dollar tunnel project that produces no water. And so there's a real ability now for them to analyze. They've always been paying for the studies. They're always willing to spend $200 million, $300 million on these studies, but when it comes to actually voting to do the project, last time, it went 60-40 in favor of the project. We believe this time, there are a number of other board members that may change their mind or be less interested in committing to this huge project that will destroy us. And I don't know if you've been to the Corley Market, you know, if they talk about adding 100 trucks going through town every day, when you back out on Highway 160 from the market, you stop traffic. As all of us know, right now, the harvester trucks are running, and it's a one-way on every bridge. So the realistic point is that this project is nothing like the tunnel from London to Paris, where they had huge open areas where they could dig and they could do things. This is our community, and this is our home, and if they put in these de-watering systems, it will result in huge inverse condemnation actions, and it will be years of litigation. So we're hopeful that by pointing this out to them repeatedly and making them aware that we will fight this thing, that they will look at this from an analytical and financial circumstance. We're right now in the middle of the CECL process, and there, according to some of the attorneys, there's some real mistakes that they've made. So the question is, will they fix them during the comment period and attempt to go forward with it, or will they just go forward? The result will be litigation for several years before we even get to the point where they have to go before the Delta Protection Commission and convince them that this is a co-equal goal. And so we are confident that a few more years of moderate rainfall, and they may reconsider their entire process. Anyway, thank you all for coming here. It's good.
Just have a quick question. Back in June, my husband and I were driving up the levee, Highway 160, for days and days and days, and there are trucks parked and stopping traffic, and they're drilling on the top of the levee through the road, and the trucks all have labels on them saying "Delta Conveyance Project", which to me says "tunnel".
Yes.
And I'm wondering, why are they drilling holes in the top of the levees on Highway 160? Does anybody know that?
We know.
Okay. So isn't that like...
So we got one more speaker to get through, and then we'll go into questions and answers. Okay? And that's, I don't know if I saw her, Gio Moreno from the town council, or did Gio come out?
They didn't, so she's not.
She wasn't in the mic. Okay. Thank you, Gio. Well, we're a little behind schedule, but I think this has been very informative discussion on a whole host of things. And I think the important takeaways are that there is a lot of eyes on the Delta. There are a lot of efforts being made to try to put good money into good projects here, and there's a lot of worthy organizations, if you want to come out and dedicate your time. But since now the 800-con gorilla is out of the room here, I will say that, yes, those trucks were doing test boring. Were part of the DCA, which is the agency that's been tasked by the state to study the feasibility for the tunnel project, so it is absolutely a portion of moving that project forward. But the project itself has not been authorized. It's still in its environmental phase. Does that answer that question? Okay. Yes, Barb?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Emily. Chairman? Yes, Emily Papalardo, the Delta County's Coalition Engineer.
Over. Just complacent.
Save the best for the last.
Oh, well, thank you. And thank you Supervisor Hume and Douglas Shaw and Pappad for this evening tonight. This is a great forum. My name is Emily Papalardo. I grew up on the north end of Grand Island on Steamboat Slough. I now work in Walnut Grove as an engineer with Gil LeBree, who's been a longtime Delta advocate and a great team. We work for Reclamation Districts in the Delta and private landowners, and we are working to support the Delta community. So what I want to talk about are the levees. The levees are the backbone of the Delta. We've heard a lot of great things and of great processes that we're doing and projects in the Delta, but we can't do this if we don't have the flood protection. But the levee programs, and Brian had mentioned them, Subventions Program is our operations and maintenance program for the whole Delta, and it's bond-funded. And it's been a very successful program that's lifetime, started in the early 1970s. Gilbert Cozzy is back there, he can correct my numbers. And was funded, I think, 75%, 25% state local cost share in the 1980s, and has been one of the most successful programs in keeping our operations and maintenance going in the Delta. But we are running out of our current bond that is funding this program. The '23, '24 year is our last year, and so we are looking for SB 638 that will be on the ballot this November to pass to continue to fund this program. So far, if it doesn't change, we should have $200 million dedicated to the Subventions Program. That gives us about 16 years of more operations and maintenance. Now, that's not a major rehab project. There's more money in there for those projects. But even if that bond passes, we still have a gap year, '24, '25, where that program is not funded. So that's a concern to us, because we need to plan our outlay and try to make sure we have, you know, projects continually going to make sure that our flood system can withstand the water we saw last year, maybe water we might see this year. We will soon see, but, you know, going back, if we started talking about the Delta Conveyance Project, with that project, you know, if it's dual conveyance, they're still going to require or rely on the levee system to convey the water. So, and if, you know, it's going to take a long time to also build this project, and you're still going to need the levees while the project is being built. So it's critical that we continue funding our system, even with that project out there, because it's important to that project, and it's important to the Delta, and it's the way that the Delta will survive and thrive into the future. So that's all I got. Thank you so much.
My apologies to Emily. I purposely took the names off the back page of the sheet, because I knew I would forget them otherwise, and hers was the only one that I didn't call. So I believe, Barb, you had a question?
I do. Thank you all for trying. This was exciting. I'm Barb. I'm a resident here in Walnut Grove. I work in Walnut Grove. I'm a Hamilton supporter of the Rotary Club of Walnut Grove and the community outreach for Rotary. Is what I heard tonight from the Delta Conservancy gentleman, that is extremely proud of the 15 years of work that has provided $22 million to the Web Track, isn't that owed by Metropolitan Water District, and isn't that money going to help work the tunnel? And if it is, why are we giving them millions of dollars when we've all been fighting the tunnels and we have all been trying very hard with our hours and millions of dollars of money to fight the project, and then they just were awarded $22 million from our local Conservancy? Could you address that for me?
The money that we allocated and the reason why Metropolitan Water District has an investment in the Delta is because they already have a conveyance system down at the south end, the Clifton Four Bay, that then connects to the canal, and we made sure before we voted for that allocation that in no way could this project be used as mitigation to offset any impacts from any tunnel project.
And who's controlling that?
Controlling the area, but only to use it as a means of mitigation?
Yes.
Yes.
It's actually in the grant agreement and the structure of the funding source, strict provision. There's just no way that they could do it. Additionally, what they're creating now, when you have an impact, you have to offset that impact when you create that impact. Doing mitigation in advance doesn't work. So there's just a distinct separation. There's no connection at all with this. What we look for in this project was just a partner that can look at a lineup, an island-scale project, that can really demonstrate how we can manage those in the future, so they don't continue subsiding and flood any kind of activity.
But Metropolitan has the money to do that on its own. They just took $22 million away from a group of people that don't have that money.
Dana, we were worrying that issue as well. We had that same concern, but the reality was, they simply weren't going to make this kind of investment to do this kind of work and on the side. So it really became sort of the interest of the state. If this is something the state and the Delta needs, we're going to have to incentivize and actually open it up.
But they own that, right? If they own that track, it is their advantage to protect their investment. So why should we contribute to help them protect their investment? Because frankly, they are the enemy. I'm sorry.
So technically, it wasn't helping protect their investment. What it is, is taking the land out of grazing land or fallow land and putting part of it into habitat and part of it into rice production. And the reason, I think, at least in my mind, why I can justify supporting this project is because it was a willing landlord, in order to accomplish some of these anti-subsidants, carbon sequestration, you know, a lot of the projects that are trying to be funded through this program, rather than taking somebody who is active in agriculture and wants to continue to farm and trying imposing something on them, you have a landlord that was willing to put their land into the deal. And then I just, I just want to say, because I share your concerns, and I thought the same way, but that meeting that Mr. Whaley was talking about with Metropolitan Water District, I sat in on that and spoke with many of their board members. And I don't think necessarily that they are the enemy. They're looking to, one, protect water rights that they have, that were granted to them, and two, to try and safeguard against some sort of catastrophic situation. And that's why, as Emily said, shoring up those levees is critically important, because we do have a freshwater conveyance system that gets water down to their intake facility. We need to protect against saltwater intrusion, and I don't think that putting an intake facility higher up in the Delta does that. And so they recognize that this project potentially could be 20 to 30 years by the time it clears all of the environmental hurdles and any kind of lawsuit challenges, and then goes under construction. And in that meantime, their users seize on a single drop of water. And so I don't think I would characterize them as the enemy.
So what you said, what, sorry, are you talking about the tunnels?
Which one?
Are you talking about the project, the tunnel, tunnels, whatever you want to call it these days? Is that what you're trying to, the project?
The one that would take 30 years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're saying, let's give them a band-aid for what they have today, so they can leverage themselves into the tunnel, which is not a done deal and is not approved on any level.
Yeah, and that's actually not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is their position was that this may not be, the tunnel project may not be their best course of action for their needs, which exist today because of the delay and how long it would take to happen. So I don't think that they're necessarily pushing this. I think that they, they need some sort of assurance that they'll have a freshwater supply for the water rights that they already own. And so I don't, I think, to the extent we can come on the same page, that if they don't necessarily want it and we don't want it, then potentially we can convince the state that it's not the best solution. So I think it's stronger to build an ally than to characterize them as an enemy. That's my own personal opinion. Yes, sir?
My name is Chuck, and thank you for coming here tonight. I appreciate that. My question is, I'm a voter, and...
Did you say voter or boater?
Voter.
Okay. Voter. I'm all vote voter.
But anyway, as we go through the Delta, we see oftentimes, you know, over the last, you know, 10 years or so, I've seen a number of boats that anchor in the, anchor somewhere in the Delta, and boats stay there for months and months, and pretty much it looks like it's a derelict boat. And there's one that's up there by Freeport, up by Freeport Bridge, where you can just see the mast, sailboats sticking out of the water. And I'm wondering, is there any, who, I don't know if this attorney was here, is there anybody who monitors boats that are anchored in the Delta? Where you're allowed to anchor, where you're not allowed to anchor?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and who's responsible for these boats? And is anybody regging these boats back out of the water? What's going on there? And then one other thing I'd like to sneak in, is there really money for monitors water quality around here? And if we could actually see what the water quality results are? Because I know there are so many old, you know, old boats that are in the Delta, some live boards, and I'm not sure that there's any, you know, what kind of mitigation is being done for, you know, people flushing tanks and all of that kind of stuff into the Delta. You know, I think it's bad for the fish, that kind of...
That's a good question.
So two things. Yes, there is an abandoned vessels program that Sheriff Jim Cooper is resurrecting and really taking seriously, and so there will be a greater effort. They've already started, I don't know if you've seen the news reports, but they've started it with pulling boats and pulling vehicles, cars, that are down in the river that you can't even see. They're finding them again and pulling them out. And so there's that aspect. So the sailboat that's completely submerged would be considered an abandoned vessel, and we just need to have it pulled out of the water and disposed of. The derelict vessels or the vessels that are mooring potentially, you know, for long amounts of time and ownership is questioned. I don't know exactly. That probably would fall under the sheriff as well. But I think what you heard from Tin Ho is he's willing to prosecute in order to hold owners accountable, to make sure that they are not polluting and littering into the rivers, whether it's full vessels or illegal discharges. And then with respect to water quality, there is considerable amount of monitoring that goes on. In fact, we just heard a report, I think it might have been, was it the Conservancy or the Delta Protection Commissioner, or it might have even been one of the other boards I sit on, and I apologize, I have so many that are concerned with the Delta, but they monitored the quality of the water above the confluence of the Sacramento and American Rivers, closer, farther up, closer to the confluence as well as deeper down, for things like E. coli and other contaminations, as well as salinity. And there was another one that had to do with, I always get this wrong, one of them you put over someone's mouth to put them to sleep, and the other one is what makes plants greater. Chloroform, chlorophyll?
Chloroform.
What, huh?
Chloroform.
The good one. There was a lower amount of the good one present in the rivers. And so there is considerable monitoring that goes on.
Did you get that information?
I'll find that out for you. If you'll be able to, by the way, I wanted to introduce my special assistant, Ashley Howe. Between her and Douglas Shaw, this is... I get to stand behind the microphone, but she does all the hard work. So if we have your information, we'll try and get you some links or something that you can check out. Yes, Anna?
Hi. Anna's been speaking in public as a person not associated with any of my jobs.
You were already up here as a member.
No, I am a private citizen. And one of my questions, I have two parts to question. The first question is, how much, because I've had this for 10 years, right? So how much have we spent on planning the tunnel project to date? I have a hard time figuring out that number. And then I want someone smart like Emily to do the math to figure out how many alternative projects we could have implemented and have on the streets today that actually creates new water, solves our problem, saves the Delta, protects the communities. I mean, I've only been through three iterations, right? DDCP, Cal Water Fix, and now DCA. I know it was the canal before then. So through all these iterations, I'm talking like staff time, all the planning, all the new studies that we've done, what is that random total number that has been spent to date? And how many alternatives could we have already implemented and already have going? And then my second question is about infrastructure, right? Because we seem to forget that we shouldn't build it, we need to fix it, we need to fix the roads before we build new roads, right? So we need to fix our infrastructure before we start looking to build new infrastructure. So my question is this, at what point are we going to look at the California Aqueduct? And we're going to cover it to save 30% of the evaporation that happens to every single drop of water that passes through that aqueduct? We are losing 30%. Literally could gain 30% more water by covering it? And then there is no calculation estimate, almost never, like Emily has numbers, but to the leaking of it, right? Because it's subsiding, it's leaking, it's a broken system. So here we are, we want to build the Denali Cadillac at the top, at the top of the Delta, but literally the chassis is pinned to it. So when are we going to fix the aqueduct? When are we actually going to like focus on alternatives that can be implemented, planned and implemented, and put into service today, meaning in the next 10 years, five years, whatever, that will actually solve our problem and stop wasting money on a project that does nothing but destroy the Delta communities, take away our homes, take away our businesses, take away our livelihood, and take away the thing that we love most dearly, which is this Delta. So I really want, I really want an answer. I've asked this multiple times, two answers. When are we going to fix the aqueduct? And how much money have we spent? And how many things could we have done that are actually positive that fix the problem? Why, I would love that answer.
Okay. So, Carrie, I don't want to show you have to give you a grand sum for all the iterations, nor necessarily what we could have bought with that money instead, but I will say you're spot-on about the existing canal and the leaks and if the evaporation, we would pick up 30% almost of water just from that one fix. And so that would be water that would not be wasted. The other issue, as I see it, is, is if all we're doing is building a conveyance system to get more water down to the intake system, but we're not building any storage or any groundwater recharge, or any way to keep that water, we have no greater throughput. And so I don't see how that is improving the system. But if you want to try and answer questions, if that's possible.
Sure. Hi, I'm Carrie Buppin from DWR, and I don't have the answer, Anna, to the question of the full life of Delta Conveyance. I've been working on it since 2019, and since then, it's been about $160 million. And just to be clear, that is not taxpayer money. That is money from the agencies that would be receiving more. So...
But that's rate payers.
It is, but it's not rate payers throughout California. It's rate payers within the areas that could benefit from the project only. So the second question about the California Aqueduct, there are a lot of efforts going on to try to improve conditions in the California Aqueduct. The number of 30% that does not only account for evaporation, that is the total of evaporation and losses from leakage. And we agree that that is higher than we would like. So there is a pilot study now looking at solar panels in the aqueduct. There is a study working on subsidence efforts within the aqueduct, and there are continually efforts to address leakage. So...
I think that's what it is, that in 10 years, at least in my time, in 10 years, I think you could cover an aqueduct. What did you say, is the largest water loss? Largest evaporated loss?
Loss, largest. Say it. Say it. Evaporative. Evaporative loss from our, you know, open channels and things are just large water loss we have in the state. So if we can cover, or figure out how we don't have surface water storage, maybe groundwater storage, we could save on it.
So I could agree with you.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you're aware, or any of the other people that are here are aware, or our attorney, I'm here with my work hammer right now, and I know most of you because my company has a lot of permitting of all of our pipe facilities, boat docks, things like that. And about six weeks ago, we're having a miserable time, because I think everybody's talking about environment, and you're forgetting us as people. And there's, as you're forgetting us as people, there's a ton of money that's being spent, I believe, to go into the permits that it's now taking. I brought one of them with me as an example. So this permit was originally done back in the 50s. It was brought up to date in the 80s with 31 conditions. It was brought up again shortly after that with an additional 34 conditions. And the owner now is trying to get the permit redrawn to do some more maintenance work because the pipe is old. And Central Valley Flood has added eight more conditions that they're calling covenants, that they are going to be recorded against our properties. And let me read you one of these covenants. "The board now holds title to interest in your real property that is benefited by the covenants and equitable servitudes that have been described in previous conditions. These interests in the real property are now owned by the board, constitutes a part of the flood control system of the state, over which the board, which is Central Valley Flood Board, exercises total authority pursuant to the laws of the State of California, including Water Code Number 8711." That's one of the 68 items. And we are being extorted to sign this, or they are going to revoke our permits. That's how they're getting, they try to get water rights from us. Okay? I'm letting you know that they're now coming around, and if you have a pipe facility or anything, you now have to sign this covenant that's recorded on your property, and the new buyer is never going to sign this. Are you aware of that?
Well, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. So is our attorney aware of it, or is he gone? He's gone?
The district attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just letting everybody know, where do we go? Where do we go? Because we shouldn't have to sign this. We shouldn't have to give this up.
I am taking up with the Central Valley Flood Control Board.
Okay.
I believe that's a body of elected representatives.
Okay, and I have asked them, and their response, just so you know, and I'm just informing you what's happening here in our Delta today. They're saying, sign it, overtaking your property.
Well, they're taking away your right to the pipe, which is the water base.
Yeah. So I'm just sharing, there's other things besides all of the wonderful things that everybody talked about tonight, about the birds and bees, which is where all the grant money is, and that's where everybody's making their money. Somebody's forgotten the people, and we really, really need to figure out how to get someone back. So I thank you all very much for letting me talk, and I hope you now know that there's something going on that is extremely important. Thanks. Thank you.
Speaking of hats, if I put my husband's hat on, my wife is already blowing up my phone of where am I and why am I not on the way home. Is there any other questions that can be answered right now? Yes?
Hi, honey.
That's her name, I'm not...
My name is, I'm part of the Law Management Corporation, and apparently new to the board, but it's been troubling to hear some of the issues in the National Historical Landmark Town. Lock Water Works provides, to my knowledge, lock drinking water to the town residents. Apparently, there has been some contract between DWR, Lock Water Works, and something to do with the, oh, Monroev Waterways, the transfer of water to the town lock. It's behind schedule. So three years into the contract of having bottled water, the contract expired. So this happened probably around four months ago, but some of the town's residents can actually attest to the timeline. But I'm concerned that the residents just don't have bottled water in the contract, and not good, filthy water is being channeled to the... and not good filter water is being channeled to the town lock. We need to take care of the residents. There are children living in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hume and everybody. Supervisor Hume, you know that the 32 property owners in lock, under a common interest development of governments that was created by the county in 2003, has a set of bylaws and CCNRs that in state law now requires, per Senator Wykowski's passed bill, it passed, it was enacted January 1st of 2019, which requires that all common interest developments in the state of California be seated by the board of those common interest developments, be seated by and elected by the property owner general membership of each common interest development. In our town, it's a self-elected and buddy-appointed club, property club, and we would like, as general members, to have elections out and by our own general members. And we would appreciate your assistance with the third-party inspector election, not the board members running your election themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will end on this. Martha pointed something very interesting out to me the other day, and that is, if you look at the Delta from Clarksburg to Ileton, it's called the Dillon Delta, because it starts in Clarksburg, and it comes down his hair, down his forehead, it goes out here to Walnut Grove and lock, and then it comes down the lips, and then it bakes another bend right at Ileton. Take a look at the river. It'll freak you out, it's someone's profile, and it's really cool to see. Yeah, there were Hitchcock, yeah, that would be another good one, except he was bald, so I don't think that that would work. You've got to have the pompadour a little bit. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for Apaka, for Doug Shaw, for C.C. Young. Thank you for all of our support. Really, very much appreciated. Please, Dr. Hume.